John, I believe you agree.
Yep.
Okay.
Awesome. Yep, cool. Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, January 7th, 2025 Selectman's Meeting. And we're gonna open up with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Long may she wait.
Amen. First up this evening, we have a special presentation, the Widow's Sons Masonic Riders Association. See, we have some folks here, so.
I'd like to thank you for inviting us in tonight. I'd like to introduce Josh LaChance. He's currently our Vice President. Alan Martin is our Secretary. Dave, hiding back here, is the Treasurer, the man with the money. So the reason we're here, just tell a little bit about us. We're the Widow's Sons Motorcycle Association, not to be confused with the Motorcycle Club, but the exact opposite of that. We're all masons. Everyone here is into this, into this program because we all enjoy riding motorcycles, and we're third-degree masons. Those are the criteria. We do anything that steps out of bounds while we're out on our motorcycles, we can lose our positions in Lodge. So we have to be a better man tomorrow than we are today. The reason we come in tonight, and Josh is gonna make the presentation, Steve approached me at when we were recommissioning the flags down at the cemetery, and he asked about the community services we do. And he told us that he had a, he had a nice budget, but he had a, a need for a couple of pediatric stretchers for WEMS 1 and WEMS 2. And he asked if we'd be able to help out WEMS with that, that program, if we were interested in getting involved, getting involved. And we said, absolutely, that's what we do, community service. So Josh is here tonight to present you with a check.
Absolutely. So it's our understanding that the cost of seats for both of the ambulances is about $1,600. So we have a check for $1,600 for the fire department and for the town to make sure those are taken care of, make sure our kids in this community are, are well taken care of. And we wanna make sure this, that it goes to Wells EMS. So, thank you for having us. Thank you for allowing us to support you guys. And, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Maybe we need a picture.
We're gonna head out.
Have him come up here, let's take a picture with him.
Yeah.
Right up in.
Yeah.
Got the seal right there.
Come around back.
What do you think?
Right around the back of the chair.
Love the seal. That's perfect. Oh, as for you guys, yeah, you guys can come up front.
All right.
Dave's like, I'm taking the front row.
You wanna go down, Dave, it might be awful, so.
Wherever we land is fine.
You're enormous.
A little more on the end. Ready? One, two, three. Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you very much. This is the word.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Switch it out. Good to see you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it.
We're gonna go through our Municipal Officers Workshop Business and Public Hearings. We have Adriana Spezafaro, DBA rollover Wells LLC, 358 Mile Road Wells, application for a secondary beer and wine liquor license for cocktails to go. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second. All is in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Christopher Farley, DBA Christopher Farley, 16 Pine Ledge Drive Wells, application for a solid waste disposal license. Would anybody in the public like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second. All is in favor? Five zero. And, on to good news.
Some good news from Town Hall, and I'd ask Finance Director Jody Sandborn to come up to the podium. Jody and her team have done a phenomenal job over the last number of weeks trying to assist people with the acquisition of not only transfer station stickers, but all the other pieces that they do. You didn't have your shit, did you?
I know.
It's okay, you're all good still, we got you. But, but all the other things they do. And she has some really interesting statistics I think you'd like to share.
Sure. First off, I just wanna take the opportunity to recognize my staff that perform the daily customer service transactions for the department. The majority of these transactions are handled by four staff members. From November 18th to January 3rd, so we started selling transfer station stickers November 18th. Staff has processed 2,306 transfer station stickers, with 1,651, or 72% of those stickers being processed from December 16th to January 3rd. On average, it takes three and a half minutes for one of my staff members to process a transfer stickers, transaction for a customer that has their vehicle registration with them and is paying by cash or check. And I did times to get that average. A credit card transaction adds on average about two more minutes. We use a third-party processor, so it's using a different website. Then they're printing to a printer not at their desk, so it's getting that paper, getting it signed and things like that. A clerk, for a clerk, if they have to find a registration in the registration program for a person that does not come into the office with the paperwork, adds on average another two minutes. What happens is you come in, you give them their name, your name. They put your name in the registration program, brings up every registration you ever had. So then they search through those records to find the correct registration you're looking for. Depending how often you purchase a vehicle, your list could be quite lengthy. So that's just a little information on that. But besides transfer station stickers, in that same time period, my staff has processed 620 vehicle registrations. Those are re-registrations, which are the easiest transactions, new registrations, whether they're bought in-state or out-of-state or private sale, or transfer registrations. A typical re-registration transaction takes about five to seven minutes, start to finish. When we start to look at new registrations, you're looking at anywhere from 15 to 30 minutes. The longer the time period is because those people may be bought from out-of-state. They have to come in and fill out the sales tax forms, or they bought a private sale. And they need to do sales tax and title applications. So that adds the time, depending on the clerk, how fast the customer completes that transit, the paperwork and everything. But just wanted to thank my staff. We just signed off on like $52,000 worth of money is going to the state for the work that they did last week. So they are busy. I appreciate the four that do the majority of the work. My accountant Nicole and myself, last week, tried to help just do transfer station stickers, reaching over the forecast for people. And, you know, we're like, hey, anybody with just a transfer station sticker, paying cash or check with a registration, we're running back to our desk just to try and move the line because I know, watching Facebook and hearing things, there are, they have been lines, just like when we have beach stickers, we have lines. So we're doing everything in our office that we can do to try and move people along. But I thank the board for your support and just thought it would be interesting to hear what, the numbers that they actually do.
Jody, could you tee up for us just a little bit? What's going to be happening in May? I think, you know, I recognize that there is some frustration from the public when they have to wait, and those three to 20 minutes can take, and there are lines and people. But in May, the reissuing of plates, can you kind of elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so Mike and I have talked, and my staff has already stressed. The state decided that they wanted to have the lighthouse plates. Those start rolling out May 1st. So anybody that has a registration that comes due May 1st or after, you will be getting, if you have the chickadee plates, you will be getting the lighthouse plates. If you have not paid the money ahead of time to reserve your plate, you're getting a new plate number. Our off, so the online system is, you're pretty much gonna be coming into the office to do registrations. I should have pulled the online registration transactions to give you the amount of people that don't come into the office. But, so because of that plate change, we're gonna have to see everybody that normally would do a registration online. So part of the concern is that happens May 1st. Beach stickers roll out for Memorial Day. So Mike and I threw out some dates, and I think we'll be back before you to try and workshop on ideas, maybe from you, of how we should issue beach stickers this year. We talked about rolling them out like March 1st, April 1st. Keeling's been in contact with me. If we do that, and your plate comes up any time after you've purchased your sticker, we need to reissue you a sticker to keep you in compliance. Are we gonna charge for those? Are there gonna be no fee? Because it's the state that's mandating that sticker change, not the town. Things like that, so.
So you're saying if you got one of the, if you bought the sticker, beach sticker ahead of time, and then you found out you had to change your plate anyway?
We have to get you, get you a new sticker, cuz the stickers are based off registration. So the police, when they're enforcing it, are looking to make sure your sticker matches your plate. So if, so let's say, Kathy, your registration is in June, but you purchase your sticker, if we roll it out in March, you purchase your sticker, cuz you won it right off the get-go. But you may not go to the beach until July. You're gonna get your sticker in March on your current plate. You're gonna come in in June, we're gonna re-register your vehicle, give you your new plate. We're gonna give you your new sticker that now has to be on your vehicle for when you first go to the beach.
Could, could we just give people a break for a year and not have to have the sticker match the plate?
That's, that's a hard decision.
Right, and that will be like bringing in the police parking enforcement.
The beach stickers are.
That's what's gonna be my exact suggestion, is just say, one year.
Yeah.
It's not gonna match.
You can't duplicate the thing, what's the difference?
So that's why we wanted to hold a workshop with you sometime in the near future to brainstorm with you about ways that we can help streamline this whole process.
Cuz they will be all lighthouse licenses, license plates, right?
So anybody that has, like, any of the other specialty plates, they're not gonna be affected. It's just the people that have the chickadee plate, and those are commercial plates. They're, they're not just a passenger vehicle, they're.
So if somebody has a vanity plate?
If somebody has a vanity plate and they have not already paid to have that vanity plate, they're gonna have to do the vanity work with the state.
How do they do that?
So the state sent out to a lot of vanity holders that they could go online and prepay. They have to pay the $30 fee to keep that. Those people that do that, they'll have the vanity plate, the state's gonna mail that to them. They'll come in at time of re-registration and they'll get their stickers from us.
Okay, so the state's gonna handle that? They're gonna send people?
Yes, if, if they've already paid their reservation fee. Well, they, they've already asked us, we have to figure out where we're gonna store all the plates that are coming to us, because they have to be securely stored. And then we have to accept the plate that you take off your vehicle, and eventually somehow we have to get those back to motor vehicle.
So if somebody wanted to keep a chickadee vanity plate, can they do that?
Yes, they just have to pay the reserve fee, yeah.
Jody, if you, if you issue a, a new lighthouse plate to, to someone, do they need to then immediately bring their chickadee plate in to you in exchange?
So depending, so most registrations are good for a month. So once, and the data doesn't leave our office the day that we process our transaction. So I would tell them, as soon as you put your new, use your new registration, you're gonna wanna make sure your new plate is on your vehicle.
And the old one comes back.
And the old, we recommend, not everybody turns in their plates. We recommend that you do turn in your plates, because if that plate gets affixed to another vehicle, if you just threw it away and somebody found it and affixed it to a vehicle, somebody could be running that plate, and it would come back to, be registered to you. If you turn them in to us, we send paperwork up to the state where it enactivates the registration for you.
And that did happen to me once. I never knew you had to turn your plates in. No one ever said, oh, by the way, I've been turning plates in, I didn't know. So that was a year, years ago, but I had an NX, because I had an NX. And I just put it to one side and somehow it got trashed out. And next thing I know, I was getting fines for a beach sticker in Portland.
Right, yeah.
Because somebody had those plates on.
Yeah, exactly.
It does happen.
So just, just in this small setting, you can see kind of where confusion and frustration. Right. And there are four folks on that front line all day long, being bombarded with the frustration. It's, it's a tough, tough job they have.
I thought that they were gonna go to a pine tree plate. Is that not happening anymore?
Well, that's, yeah, it's got the, yeah, the, that's the flag, yes.
Okay, so that's the, that's the lighthouse plate.
Oh, did I say lighthouse? I meant, I meant pine tree, yeah. We have so many, I, yes, I'm sorry, yes. The pine tree plate, yes, the flag, we're going to the flags, yeah.
Will this affect motorcycle plates?
Motorcycle plates are not affected, because that does not have, yes.
You put your dump stick on your motorcycle?
Yourself?
You put your dump stick on your motorcycle?
No, but I don't wanna lose my vanity watch.
No, and thankfully motorcycles are a mandatory march, so that would not take place till next March if it was plates changed, yeah.
Can you, brief example, recently someone came in and didn't have a registration. So we tried to look up, and I believe there were 139 registrations under that person's name. And so then you try to call to say, well, which one is it? And that's why we require the registration to come in, matches the, the transfer station sticker. And there is frustration, I've fielded a few calls about, why can't we just do three cars at once? And, and so it makes it very challenging. And so we ask for people's patience, and we have the reasons why we ask for what we do.
Well, if they brought all three registrations in.
That's fine.
You know, okay.
That's fine. And, and I recognize people realize they need to have the reg in the car, but if the two cars are parked, or they photocopy their reg and leave the photocopy and bring us, that we can do the transaction all at once.
And we've also had customers that have taken a picture of their registration, and it's on their phone.
Perfect.
They just show that to the customer, I mean, to my staff. Same thing with, when we're doing beach stickers, a lot of times we have out-of-state taxpayers that are coming in, and they've got the one they're driving and the wife or spouses at work, and they just text us a picture or email us a picture and things like that, so.
Oh, good, that's a good idea. Good point.
Jody, the veterans' plates, not affected by this?
That is correct, yeah.
All like the chickadee?
Yeah, it's anything with the chickadee. I should have brought up the list. I think it's 14, 14 classifications of cars that we will be affected with. And the purpose behind it, if nobody knows, is the state is bringing some of the chickadee plates, if you'll see they're peeling, and they're not illuminated very well. And it's a safety, that's a safety issue on the state's side, that's the main reason behind it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Off the subject. You mentioned looking up tax bills, and it made me think of the property taxes. So the property taxes bills that are on the website are, I think, a couple of years old. Is that, was that done for a reason? Or are we gonna be able to get back to having the property taxes accessible online, or?
Believe Rebecca has the current year uploaded.
Oh, they are, yeah, okay. Okay. Then I stand corrected, sorry, thank you.
Um, the prob, but we can explain, it's one big data file of every PDF. The printer doesn't break it out like ABC for us. So Rebecca, with her skills, at least can get it posted. If you're proficient with Adobe, you can just do a search on a name and find the bill you're looking for, so you don't have to scroll. I think it's 17,000 bills or something.
Yeah, it's pretty big.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jody.
Thank you, Jody.
Just tired of listening to her. I can't imagine that.
Before we move on to open the public, what I'm gonna do is, there was a slight miscommunication between Mike and I on some scheduling, everything coming up, leading up to the holidays. We have our State Senator Joe Rafferty here. Joe, I'm gonna invite you right up to one of these chairs up here, if you don't mind.
Sure. Not Wyatt, is it?
What's that?
Not Wyatt.
I don't think so.
I don't know what Tim's gonna do.
Mike, if you don't mind coming up. Joe, thanks for coming out.
Oh, absolutely, happy to be here.
So Joe, Joe had agreed to come out to kind of speak about LD 2003. I had mentioned him in a conversation him and I had, that we'd had a couple of concerns from a town level, in regards to things that had come up in our conversations leading up to this. And Joe offered to come out and sort of hear those and maybe share some thoughts. So Mike, I'm gonna kick it over to you, because I think through these conversations, I think that you've probably categorized quite a few of them, so.
Yeah, I mean, the town's been struggling for a couple of years on it, since the law got drafted and then got passed, and then got extended as well for its effective date, which was last July, 2024, of course. But some of the issues that the town has really struggled with is some of the standards. They're more intended for larger municipalities, cities even. For example, the Affordable Housing Statute requires that you, the maximum parking to be, you know, required by the town and the ordinance is one space, or one space for every three dwellings, I think it is. And affordable housing, you know, is great, you know, we have an affordable ordinance already that allows a very high density, not quite as high as the new statute called for, but pretty high. But the parking, lack of parking requirement really fits in with the city environment where you, where you have public transportation. And as a smaller town, we don't, we don't have that. We even, during the summer, the trolleys run, but that hasn't run for, since COVID, I think, due to lack of drivers in that service. We do have a bus service that comes from Sanford to Wells, but if there was an affordable housing complex that had to meet the state criteria and we allowed it in town, we don't have a dense downtown for people to walk to for jobs either. So I, that was just an example of one item and the affordable housing requirements that we struggled with. Another was just the, the allowance ADUs everywhere that a dwelling unit is allowed, cuz in the town of Wells, we're such a seasonal community and tourist-driven community, you know, an accessory dwelling unit, for the most part, is a short-term rental. That's what most of them become, I, I almost say, maybe half, half become that. And, you know, ones we have are susceptible to be converted to short-term rentals. And so we've been working on the ordinance to regulate short-term rentals, cuz I know under the statute, that is allowed, towns can adopt that and, and put restrictions on short-term rentals that they can't on accessory dwelling units. So that's another item we've been working on and struggling with. Another item is under the multi-family development rules, to allow multiple dwelling units on one lot, we've always allowed that in most districts, but we had extra buffer requirements. So that if someone, if a developer was proposing a 20-unit complex next to existing single-family homes, we require triple the setback and a 25-foot buffer, that the planning board would determine for screening to protect the single-family homes that surround that type of development. And the state doesn't, by the state statute, that's not allowed. You can only require a buffer or setback that's equivalent to a single-family dwelling. So in a zoning where we have a 15-foot lot line setback, by the state statute, we're only allowed a 15-foot setback and squeeze a buffer within that area. Under our current ordinance, we have a 45-foot setback and a 25-foot buffer requirement. So those are requirements we've had in our ordinance for years. And if we fully comply with the state statute, a lot of that goes away, which is hard for us to deal with, because every project that comes to town goes through planning board of that nature. And of course, all the abutters are very concerned about growth and what goes in next to them. And, and there's inherent conflict there. And, and just in growth in general, the town has very strong concerns over growth. And, and some of those, that statute certainly promotes growth. And the intent, of course, is for affordable housing, which everyone knows is needed. But it's how to make it happen without huge impacts to the town and to those abutters, to those projects, which I'm sure are all typical statewide concerns.
Yeah, I'm a little, how does an ADU unit become a short-term rental?
Well, in, in the town, we allow ADUs right now in most zones. They're restricted in size, but once that ADU is created, someone can rent it out to whoever they want. It can be weekly rentals during the summer, weekend rentals. People go on Airbnb or other such, Vermo, other such websites, and they rent them out to tourists or visitors, you know, during the summer. So it doesn't accomplish the goal of affordable housing at all. It just increases impacts of the town.
Yeah, that's a little confusing to me, cuz I thought, as I recall, I actually visited one of the AD units that was, one of the early ones built here in Wells, I think. But they were, I don't think they were intended to be short-term rentals, and there were restrictions on some of the things you were able to put in, I believe, locally, and I might be wrong, but like, so if I had an ADU unit attached to my home, so if I, like, I was taking care of my mom or something like that, then it was my kitchen area, that type of stuff, there were restrictions on that. Is that not true?
Correct, and we have a limit. You can have a, a kitchen, a bedroom, possibly even two bedrooms, if you can configure it within 600 square foot. So in town of Wells, we have a 600-square-foot limitation. You can put a full kitchen in, it can be rented out as a separate apartment. You know, historically, when those were first started, an in-law apartment, you know, was, was a popular use of them. But with our beach community, the ones down at the beach are mostly being rented out during the summer to tourists and visitors.
Some of that you won't be able to capture, because people are gonna do what they're going to do. I mean, whether it's regulated or not, but I think that's a strong case for why the parking requirements are probably so necessary. Because if that's going on, that's where your real issue would come in, would be with the parking, I think, especially where we see with these, you know, the short-term rentals. And we've had a huge problem with that down on Atlantic Ave, where people are parking in the road. And, you know, there's been some, some, as far as I know, there's been some strikes down there with bicyclists and pedestrians already, so it's just not a desirable situation if we're not allowed to sort of regulate that issue. It could become a big problem.
And that's a great example, too, of, you know, where it seems like it's more written in the statute for a city environment. City environments, you have street-side parking. In towns like ours, very, very few streets are allowed for street-side parking.
I did, I'm, I'm visioning that they were to assist families, you know, like, like I described. Somebody's needs to either be taken care of, or somebody moves in to take care of. Like, if I put one on my home so my kids could take care of me down the road, or. So I'd be interested if you could share those concerns. So for me to try to remember that and interpret all that is gonna be pretty difficult. But certainly that's something, I don't know how often those things are reviewed. Have you tried to appeal those rules?
We've been working on draft ordinances for a while. We have the town attorney working on some draft changes right now. And the struggle is to try to match our local needs and requirements and, and make it comply with the statute. And we haven't got a final draft from the town attorney yet on it to, to make both coincide. Our goal is to get something on in June at the June Town Meeting, ordinance changes, but.
But there is an appeal process. We are waiting for your attorney to draft, okay. I mean, I can definitely bring it to attention, but I, I would need to see what you're doing. And I'm sure there's, if there's an appeal process, obviously, then I think we look at that. That's the fir, would be the first step.
Maybe what we could do, I think our, our next meeting is when the town attorney is coming in. Perhaps we could go through that, and if there's any specific issues that are identified, perhaps we could email those over to you.
Yeah, I'd be happy to take it forward for you. I just, I, I've never made an appeal in any of this area, so it's not my, you know.
I think the parking is a stronger, strongest one right away.
Yeah, I, I think parking, but I think you have to add the S-word in there in terms of the safety. I think that, that's what's gonna get someone's attention a little bit more. Whether it's 25 feet or 30 feet, in my head, that doesn't seem to make a big difference. But if it's, it creates a safety issue, then you have to have, you know, you get more attention there.
And, and we're also grappling with the ability to have those uses short-term rentals, which is definitely not what they were designed.
And we're absolutely not intending. Absolutely not intended for short term rentals. Correct. And I think that's why a lot of communities resisted them at first. Um, and then, you know, so um, I think that's something that I've heard. And I, I attend meetings at five communities and I've heard that this will be the second community. That's brought that piece of it to my attention in terms of the short term rentals. And I, I'm sure it goes on other places, but no one's actually brought it forward. But I think that's definitely, um, my understanding was that wasn't part of an ADU. You know, that wasn't their intention. Um, so can we turn around and try to revisit that? And uh include some language would, that would um eliminate that, that use. Okay, the, you're gonna also, if, let's say that happened, then you're gonna hear from another group of people, you know that. That have been doing it for years, uh, you know, feel like, hey, I put it on and it's no longer needed for what we started with. And here's what we want a unit, but if, I mean, somebody, the intention was not for somebody to just create an ADU unit for a short term rentals. It was short term or long term use, um, to take care of family issues. I mean, I know there's people that have standalone homes, smaller versions. Um, but it's, you know, it's, it's basically, um, as I've mentioned or described. It's either a parent saying, I gotta provide a place for my kid to live, uh, cause affordability. Or if it's a kid that's putting something on for a parent so I can take care of mom or dad and, and time of need. Uh, so I mean, it's unfortunate that, you know, there's, people will always find a loophole, I understand. But I'd be happy to try to close those in any way I can for you.
Have you folks in Augusta explored statewide regulation for short term rentals? I recall reading an article where I thought that you folks were gonna start looking into it, but I, I never saw much after that.
Probably do, but honestly, it doesn't come to like individual legislators unless somebody has a specific, like, you know. Uh, that's their pet project, so to speak, but yeah, regulations are always reviewed, but we don't necessarily. Here, we might get a report out, but it's not something that we discuss on a regular basis at all. In fact, I don't re- recall any discussions since the ADU units, you know, came to be. But in terms of issues like this, coming to our level, no.
There's some stuff that I think that towns are going to be ill equipped to deal with moving forward. And it dovetails into this, you know, office quite nicely in terms of. You were talking about um LD two thousand and three being for affordable housing. But I think what we're going to see coming up and, and we are seeing it around the country and in Maine. Is your affordability crisis is only going to be compounded by the fact that there are multinational corporations buying single family dwellings. And operating them like lodging units. I think it's becoming more prevalent and it's probably something I think that Augusta should look into. We've had, that's part of my concern is we had, you know, Home Rule. I don't wanna say subverted because I think the intent of the bill was nice, but I, I think that it was blind to some of the things that are popping up. In terms of LD two thousand and three, but we're really not addressing some of these issues that are really the driving force behind that thing. So I, 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 I would probably, I think, I'd like if you maybe you look, looked into that a little further.
We, I'm, I'm, again, that's not my expertise, but so you're describing, uh, I have a property. And, and outside corporation buys it. And they start using it for rental rentals. Now, don't, uh, isn't there something in an ordinance or a rule or a law? That somebody has to declare ownership and what that's being used for?
Well, the tough thing is I think you'd find that most corporations need to be treated like individuals. Otherwise, you run into the, an instance where you could have a discrimination case. And I'm not particularly well versed in it, but we've run into a lot of challenges. I know when we've talked about it and we're gonna be going down that road a little further. With what we can do locally, but I think the state probably really has a mandate to act. Um, I, I would strongly encourage you to look into that if you had time.
Good, but you folks see it. You know what I mean? The state, they're gonna react to what the information they receive. They're not going out looking for it. You folks are, you know, in the trenches and you see it. So I would certainly, again, bring it forward, but I need more help in terms of describing that. But I mean, so if, if a corporation, if Hilton came in and bought up six houses in Wells. When they go in to get those permits, they don't put an individual person's name on it. For rental, right?
Permits for.
Well, I mean, if I, if I own a property, can I just lease it out, rent it out to anybody? I don't have to have any kind, there's not, no communication.
Just, just so you don't wrap the joke, sorry.
That's alright.
There, there's a. We've known each other for a little while. Um, the, the idea.
Called me worse.
Down on, on Route one, I know of a, a si- situation where somebody bought the house. You know, I, they, he's just not a large corporation, not a Hilton, but, but a company that does this stuff. And turned it into six different Airbnb units, you know what I mean? And these, these people are sitting there like, I used to have a home here. And now next to me is basically a little mini hotel that I had no idea was gonna happen. I know of another place on, on Lord Hope Farm, that they were basically running as a wedding venue. And these poor people like, they were sit-, you know, they used to sit on their deck in the backyard watching the deer. And now every weekend, there's somebody playing dis-, you know, DJ music out the back and people dance and it's, and they're like, it's every weekend. Like, you could see a party once in a while at your neighbor's house, but every weekend doing that and that, it's going on. Uh, you know, I think what, sort of what John's saying, maybe on a, a scale. And then going back to the LD two thousand and three, which I was up there for, you know, and I, I didn't vote for it. And one of the reasons I didn't was because we brought up, or I, I did, with a couple of the local um down this way. Is that this issue of it becoming, I called it the Airbnb bill for Wells. I, you know, I mean, I, I, we said it right there on the floor, was that I could just see this becoming, every guy on Atlantic Ave saying themselves, beautiful. I can build a six hundred foot, you know, uh, square foot little unit that I'm gonna rent out and, and there's no parking. My own house on the beach has one parking spot at it, you know what I mean? We didn't, we didn't choose to build it, but you know what I'm saying is, is this idea of, of this. And it wasn't when we brought it up to uh, uh Representative Fecto and, and the people that sponsored the bill. There wasn't really an answer to, how do we stop this from becoming an air, you know, it was just like, well, we're trying to create affordable housing. That's great, you are, but you haven't solved the issue of what happens, cause as we know, it's gonna, it could change or whatever. You could, you know, and it's very hard for a town with four or five code enforcement offices or whatever the number is, to go to every house in this town that's. I mean, I can't remember, last time I was on the Airbnb, it was, I, the number was, I couldn't believe how many people Airbnb their homes. I, I, the number is exagger-, it, 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 uh, not exaggerating, it's just unreal. I went on just fooling around one day and I'm like, ow, everybody rents out their homes. There is a exact number, but it's, it's way higher than people realize in these towns.
And I can understand that and I, I, you know, maybe it should be the abused dwelling unit. Um, but, so I don't know at what point the state steps in, or you, you see it. So if you have no local control, then I think that what we need to do is. Find a means to create local control. So I'm sure there's local control over the person that's turned it into a wedding venue.
There is some, but the, the idea, that, that's one extreme, but the idea of this, this LD two thousand and three. You've taken away our control. Not you personally, but the state has taken away our control on that. Because we can't tell them they can't build it, and if they build it saying, yeah, I'm building this for my mother in law, like you're asking my father in law. And then I, and then just go back to the house and say, yeah, I told them we're building for our mother in law, but we're gonna get two thousand dollars a week for this. You know what I mean? It, 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 there's no, there's no enforcement for us on that.
Right, stop there. So if now they're advertising it as an Airbnb, it's not an ADU unit. It's no longer an ADU unit. So there has to be some means by which you can intervene. To prevent that from being disguised as an ADU unit.
Yeah, but you, but you want it?
What I think um, Tim might be saying is, we might need some kind of legislation.
Sure, that's what I mean. We need to, we need to figure out what that is. That's why, I mean, whether it's your he-, you know, your help, your help, uh, let's, let's, you know, work at that.
I think we had teeth from the state to be able to say, listen, this wasn't the intent of this bill.
Right.
That would, to do this, it would be much easier for us to come back and say, hey, hold on a second, what are you using this for? It, it's still gonna be very hard for our people, a- as you just heard, we're busy everywhere, you know, as you know, even in Kennybunk, it's the same story. To have these guys oh, check online, okay, well, what did we approve that for? Well, we approved that as an ADU. Okay, well, they're advertising Airbnb, let's go shut them down. It's not as easy, you know, I mean.
It, it isn't as easy.
It's doable, but I'm not.
And it doesn't take long for word to get out. And also if it, it, Representative Fecto's back in position, so he's, it was his.
It was his baby.
It was his baby. Let's go back to him with, hey, baby, you know, we need to fix this. Uh, because if it's a fine, if it's a whatever, a threatened closure, I, I, I have no idea where that would go. But clearly, um, if the control's been taken away, there's a means by which you get control back.
Well, y- you understand that we had control, um, only because there was a limited number of um dwellings you could have on a piece of property all along. So if somebody had the ability or they applied for an accessory dwelling unit and they had a reason for it, they went through the permit process and did that. But the way the two thousand and three is kind of written, you don't have the, all the restrictions that we had that protected us. Somewhat from this kind of thing, as far as the density or where there was or the parking or any of that. Those got removed in two thousand and three.
But we're talking about the use. There was a clear intent on the use of that facility. So if they were selling hot dogs and burgers out the window, that's not an ADU unit. You know, it sounds like a restaurant stand or a, you know, hot dogs.
Can I bring up another challenge?
Sure.
So I certainly understand the need for additional housing that, that Maine has a need. Um, and we've got a quite a bit of housing or construction happening already in Wells. West of the Turnpike, we don't have public water. Two years ago, my well went dry and it costs us thousands of dollars to get water again. Now, one of my neighbors is going through the same thing. They've got to drill a new well. This is happening all over the place out there. And we don't even have the ADUs popping up yet. Once we do, with the additional need for water and all the subdivisions that are going in. Where does that money come from? I mean, people are just not made of money to have to go back out and, and re-drill their well over and over again. Again, I certainly understand the, the need, but the unintended consequences are, are hurting people.
Well, I'm also west of the Turnpike and I, I've experienced that myself. It wasn't necessarily due to ADU units, I mean, it's, but clearly, there, I anticipate. You know, I think it's with climate, you can talk about it, but if there's, if we're not getting rain, we're not getting snow. There's gonna be an issue, especially if we increase demand. So again, looking for protections for your own community. Then is it possible that there can be a limit on the number of ADU units being built?
I don't think that there is one right now.
There is a one right now.
Well, I think so. Those are the things and, and, you know, we could, I can make a law. You can make a law, local law, state law, federal law, and it goes into place. And I think for a bit, that law is a, a bit of an experiment. Because then you have to turn around at some point and amend it. So let's, you know, look at that as a challenge in terms of what amendments would fit. I don't think Airbnbs fit the definition of an ADU unit.
Oh, and that's why I think my, my personal opinion of it is I think that you folks did probably half the work. I think that obviously there's some, some room for improvement, like, you know, maybe some more local controls over things like parking or buffering or things like that. But I think you still have more work to do if you really wanna encourage affordable housing. And that's the state really needs to look at regulating at a state level, short term rental units. And I, I would be interested, because that's something that when you increase, you were increased, we're trying to increase housing supply to lower the price. But when it's not being used for the intended purpose, when it's becoming a conver-, a commercial venture, you're still not increasing supply. So we haven't kind of looked at where that housing is going. You, you see what I'm saying?
I, I know what you're saying, but I, you know, there's, so that's where this, this, you know, the state has a, a view this big. You have the local view, this is how it's impacted us. So we bring that to the attention of Big Brother. And let's create an amendment, create a fix that's gonna work locally. Do you want, I guess, to continue to allow those to be used as Airbnbs? Yes or no? That is a huge fight, you know?
And it's not only um accessory dwelling units. It's the fact that so many properties are being taken off the long term living inventory. And turned into Airbnbs because it's more lucrative. The, the problem I think that we have along those lines is if we try as a one community. To um stop that, what kind of lawsuits are we subject to? If we have a state law to fall back on, that helps us.
So let's redefine the law. That's where, and again, that's what's gonna happen and that's, that's gonna be with help of your community. I can tell you that there were, I can see them right now, two homes right now, built uh down in Lower Village of Kennybunk. And they were intended to be homes, okay? Uh, they were sold, they were built, sold, and now they're rented for over twenty five hundred dollars a night, a night. And, you know, and clearly the people lied when they put in their application for property. And um I, you know, they're on, I, one of them's on the market right now, over two million dollars.
I think the bottom line is, is that the one size all legislation for ordinances. Throughout the state just doesn't work. I mean, that, there's a ru- reason that we had Home Rule and it, it's been taken away from us. And honestly, it's just not right. If you want to give us, if the state wants to give us a concept and say, hey, come up with a way to, you know, implement that.
Right.
We can do that, but when you, you know, say, you are going to do this, and we go, well, that doesn't work here. You know, that, that leaves a lot to uh, to be desired.
So right now, we know it's not working. So now we gotta find out a way to make it work. But the other thing we're dealing with right now in this environment is greed. And it's, I mean, it's absolutely out there.
That's never gonna go away though.
No.
No, but you know, I, I don't know that, but I've never seen it. I don't know that you have ever seen it like it is right now. I mean, houses are doubling in price almost overnight and people are walking in and able to pay cash. I mean, uh, and people have done that, knocked on my own door and said, yeah, I can give you eight hundred thousand dollars for your house. And I'm like, I'm all excited. Then I turn around and look, where can I go? I can't go anywhere. I can't go anywhere.
And that, that's happening, that's actually happening at, at a higher level. Um, like see, in this town, the people that sell their house, so they come here to retire and they build a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. Or an eight hundred thousand dollar house. And they buy up the ones that, that might be regularly affordable to middle income people. And they buy those and they, to, and now because it's in such demand, those houses are selling for five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars. So before we can even look at affordable, right now, the middle income people are, uh, we're being bought out of our houses here. And, you know, at that level, let alone at an affordable level.
And again, I, I could definitely say I've heard much of that. Because people that work, you know, you, you have people that work in this building that can't afford to live in the community. You know, you have teachers that are, you know, how many years you have to teach to be able to afford a home in Wells? You're not coming here as a first, second, third, fourth, fifth year teacher and buying a home on the coast. That's unfortunate. I don't know the fix for that, but I think we gotta go back to the ADU units, which is. Which is where we started and if, you know, um, I can't go back and draft up something that's gonna fit your community. I think we're, we're gonna need your help. You know more of what you're running into in terms of issues.
And I would think it's all the coastal communities, absolutely, because that's where you're gonna get the first run of, that's where the places are gonna be renting for the big money. Um, down at the beach and then even going inland on that. So all the coastal areas, you know, where there's a, they're gonna be, they've, they've gotta be looking at the same thing we are.
But, and, and again, I'm sure they are, but there's a difference between something that was built as an ADU unit. And it's something that has been a long time hotel rental, uh, I mean, a cabin rental or whatever.
Yeah, um, yeah, but we're not talking about the ones that have been here. We already know about those.
And they're, they're, so we bring it, we move it forward. So we bring it, we move it forward, we take a look at it, we get it to the attention, and if we have to make adjustments, I think we we. Try to do that.
The thing is, it's it's just not the beach anymore, it's pushing into the residential neighborhoods. I mean, it's always happened down the beach and we understand that, but, you know, when you live in a small neighborhood and it's quiet and all of a sudden, you've got a rental property next door to you. Y- your life just changed.
But, again, you weren't permitted to put a rental property next to you. You applied for an A D U unit. And the intention of that unit is for us, you know.
But it doesn't specify that within the law.
I I would have, I I can't say that, but so then, then maybe that's, maybe that's the first.
The state statute does allow towns to create short-term rental ordinances to regulate them. Which we've been working on. But that puts a big burden on the town. For us to look at that, we've looked at writing an ordinance, it's partially drafted, but it would. Involve creating a whole licensing program for them. A new fee for those licenses, those fees would go towards maybe one or two new employees to then regulate them. And check on them to make sure they are being used to by the proper uses that they are, so it's placed a big burden on the town. Financially and ordinance-wise to regulate them as short-term rentals. There are services you can subscribe to that monitor. The Airbnb rentals, they go to all the websites that are available out there and they'll give you the locations of where they'll be rented. That annual subscription is ten and twelve thousand dollars per year to have that third-party company do that monitoring for you. But then the town still has to take action on those units and go after them to make them get licensed. And then do inspections and make sure they're still operating the way they're supposed to do, so that. The law put that burden on the town to create that short-term rental use ordinance, fee system, licensing, inspections. And that's a big burden.
But that's separate from these units.
Not currently, we have to draft an ordinance and regulate them. That burden was put on the town to create. A distinction between short-term rentals and A D Us. Currently, our A D Us are rentally available for rent. As a use.
And that, I mean, but they rent their homes.
Yes, and homes get rented too.
And that, people are renting further, people that don't live here can rent their home for a month and they pays for all their taxes for a year, so they, you know, that happens a lot.
And we are fortunate in the town, luckily, we do have an affordable housing development going in west of the Turnpike. And the developer of that is completely nonprofit, has been selling the units as affordably as possible. Um, and we have, you know, it was approved for a hundred affordable units. And about half of them have been built and sold and occupied, so we're lucky that we have at least one development in town. That is addressing the affordable workforce housing type need.
Yeah, so Wells hasn't ignored that. I mean, we've been working towards providing it the best way we can.
And that is a goal, I mean, that's the goal statewide, but it, but when we go back to the rental piece. There's no, I I don't understand how A D U units, and I and I know it's people, you know, pushing the, you know. Pushing things aside, but that's not why they were built.
Oh, that wasn't the intent of the statute at all, I understand that, but the result is is that.
So we we know the result has, it's turned out to be the wrong thing, so that's what I'm saying, is we need to make it the right thing. And that's where you or you or, and the combination of, um, I don't know what's going on, I'm sure that. The same is happening in other communities, so, and again, I'm not questioning you, but it's more about. If this is a common theme, can um a group of you. Put something together for us to take forward. There's no one-size-fits-all, I understand, but the A D U unit being rented and the turnover. That's that's just total abuse. And someone taking advantage of it.
Excellent, so maybe what we could do after we have our next meeting, maybe we could email over some thoughts to you, some suggestions and. That sounds, sounds pretty good.
I'd be happy to sit with you if you, you know, to bring something forward, uh, absolutely. I will check to see if um what else is going on, I obviously, um, you know, talked. I've had communication within my own district, haven't done a lot outside of 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 the district. Um, so, but I can start poking around a little bit to see. I mean, there's somebody in the chamber from every commu- you know, every community, uh, representing every community, so we can find out what's going on and. How, how, how much benefit versus, you know. How much, how much is being, are we being taken advantage of? Somebody just found a uh a gold mine and they just tapped it. But it would aggravate, you know, it aggravates me to to think that. You do something with good intentions and someone takes advantage of it, I mean, but that's, you know, we're we're. You know, wired a little bit differently than a lot of people.
Excellent.
Should we talk about high school football classifications?
It's alright, I don't, is it reclassification, not, is it?
And they're doing a great job of it.
Oh, I'm sure. My favorite was when we were in A for ten years.
You're saying there's eight hundred and seventy-one places for rent tonight within seven miles of Town Hall?
All A D U units?
And during the summer, it goes up to twelve to fourteen hundred.
I I, every like closet people are trying to rent. But, you know, that to me is different than an A, it's something, a structure that was built as an A D U unit. That's wrong.
People are setting up campers, plumbing them into the septic system and renting them out as a, an Airbnb. It's a big problem. Still have that camper, huh?
Uh, I, it's, it's a shame that, you know, that's, I, that stuff goes on, but we. I'm here to help you, try to fix a situation if we can, so, willing to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming out.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thanks for seeing.
Thank you as well. Sat up there all day. No, we did, we we got a lot done today, but I don't anticipate a whole lot tomorrow and then I'm gonna listen to. You know, the higher eds tomorrow and all that stuff.
The chair looked comfortable though. In the senate anyway, not the house.
Guys have some nice chairs over there, huh?
They got a lot better over there.
Yeah, I'll tell you about my first year. Off the camera though. Thank you very much.
Steven, thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you for all the work you do.
Should've kept that backpack with that Kennybug stuff.
Well, you're gonna have a bonfire after you win.
You too now. Alright, moving on, uh, we have open to the public for the first time this evening, we have ten minutes set aside, general questions, comments, concerns. We ask anybody speaking, try to keep it to three minutes, so everybody has a chance, anybody like to come up to the podium? Seeing none, we'll move on to current agenda items, the first wi- is, uh, the first which is review and action on accounts payable and payroll warrants, any discussions surrounding this?
I move to approve and sign the warrant dated January seventh, twenty twenty-five in the amount of three million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred. Eleven dollars and fifty-three cents. And the general assistance warrant dated January seventh, twenty twenty-five in the amount of ten thousand, six hundred and four dollars and fifty-five cents.
All those in favor? Four, zero with one abstention. Next, we have update discussion and action on committees' projects, issues, purchases and personnel, the first is discussion and action to accept. Accept a fire system easement for the River Landing subdivision.
Thank you, um, I I had plans up on the monitor, but the monitor.
Obviously the monitor had other.
It did, that didn't coincide with mine. Uh, so, yes, the first one, we have two to look at tonight, the first one is for River Landing subdivision. It was a subdivision approved by the planning board a couple of years ago. Uh, the road's been built to base course of pavement and it included the requirement for an onsite fire cistern for fire protection. For the new neighborhood, uh, they're at the point where they're looking for their first occupancy of their home. Which triggers the need for the board to consider accepting an easement for that fire cistern system. Uh, the homeowners association that'll be part of the subdivision or developers completely responsible for maintaining it. But the town can use it for firefighting purposes, um, so the process is for the board to consider accepting that easement.
Any discussion?
Uh, just one question, we have a lot of these fire ponds around. Uh, is this a new way that things are going?
Yes, uh, in in working with the fire chief and looking at. The uh fire pond maintenance requirements, because typically in the past, we do fire ponds. Uh, but they get, have to get tested every year and when they get tested, sometimes sentiments are drawn into the system. And it's putting excessive wear on the pumps within the fire trucks, uh, so now the planning board. Uh, after workshopping with the fire chief, is now switched from fire ponds to cisterns, so the cisterns are an underground concrete tank. That contain thirty thousand gallons of water, uh, so it's good for the immediate needs of that neighborhood. Uh, so the fire department can hook right into that hydrant, draw water out of the tank and fight that fire.
It also doesn't have to, well, is there a worry about the cisterns being refilled? Where the fire ponds, you're relying on rainwater?
Yes, yes, or some of them have wells beside them to keep them full, um, but the cisterns, if they're used, they'll have to be refilled. Um, so if they're used on-site on that subdivision, the homeowners association will have to refill it after it's been used. Um, if the fire department uses the water in that tank for fighting a fire somewhere else, then the town will have to refill it for them. And that's included in the easement language.
But the, but overall, cisterns are the way to go.
Yeah, they 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 uh prevent more wear and tear or less wear and tear on our fire engines and the pumpers. Um, and it's guaranteed water supply, it's an underground tank, so it never dries out. You have to rely on rain to keep it full or a well to keep it filled. Um, they do have to be maintained, every five years, the water has to be emptied and replaced.
And retested?
Yep.
I know, uh, riding around town, um, this past summer, a lot of those fire ponds were pretty low.
Yeah, the last few years, it's been an issue. That's why on the newer subdivisions, the planning board has been requiring a water supply well on-site. To keep it filled and the newer ponds have a defgate in them, uh, so that even the homeowners association would go out. With red, green and yellow colors on it, and if it gets down to yellow, they're supposed to turn the pump on to keep the pond full. Um, because it takes a long time to fill them from from a well.
These are very expensive though, right?
Yeah, typical cistern system, the tanks alone are eighty to ninety thousand and then to install them, hundred forty, hundred fifty thousand. Uh, combined, the tank and installation, about a hundred forty, a hundred fifty.
Cost to the person that are building a house in that building.
Yes, yep, but ponds are expensive too, especially with, you know, digging them, getting enough volume. Uh, putting in a well for water supply, so it's comparable to the same cost as putting in a pond. And, you know, the developer always has the option of putting sprinkler systems in the homes, uh, but that's even more expensive.
Any discussion? Thanks, Mike.
Ready for motion? I move to accept the fire system easement for the River Landing subdivision.
Second, all those in favor? Five, zero. And next, we have discussion and action to accept the fire system easement for the Timber subdivision.
And this is similar, this is a nine-unit development, it was a multi-family development off of Sanford Road. It consists of three duplexes, a house and another single unit. Three, half, nine, nine units total out there and the same thing in thirty thousand gallon cistern. This one's right next to Sanford Road, so maybe it's very easily accessible and it's to, uh. Again, so they can get their first occupancy to accept that easement.
Trade it in?
Yes, yes, it used to be town land, yes.
I move to accept the fire system easement for the Timber subdivision.
Second, all those in favor? Four, zero, and I'm gonna abstain just because I I worked for them doing a small job over there with one of my companies, so. Even though it's something relatively benign, I'm just gonna abstain from that. Next, we have discussion and action to. Nope, thanks, Mike, sorry. Next, we have discussion and action to select two members of the board of selectmen to serve on the strategic planning group charged with exploring the merger. Of the Wells Emergency Medical Service and the Wells Fire Department.
I'd like you on that.
Want to? Alright.
Well, I I have other commitments, so.
I'm the liaison right now, I wouldn't mind doing it, but if somebody feels very strongly, that's fine.
So, Tim and.
Jim, Tim and Jim.
Tim and Jim.
Hi, Tim, I'm, I started uh putting together uh numbers. Uh, and once I start getting the information on that, you and I can get together.
Numbers for what?
Uh, on uh financial numbers on whims. I asked for the information for last five or six years, I'm starting to put that information together. Well, we can talk about that offline.
Alright.
I move to appoint Tim Roach and Jim Smith to serve on the stra- strategic planning group charged with. Exploring the merger of the Wells Emergency Medical Service and the Wells Fire Department.
Second, all those in favor? Five, zero. Alright, next, we have discussion and action on a resolution to change Maine Pers retirement plans for Public Works, General Government and non-union employees.
Yeah, I think probably my memo, I hope summarized um pretty effectively, um, this was negotiated during the time that. Um, we negotiated and ratified contracts with the General Government and the Public Works Department. And incorporated within this request would also be to allow this for our non-union members as well. Um, and what this does is really the Plan A C allows for a COLA um to be incorporated. Um, in the retirement plan, and so for example, this year, under, well, I'll go into this current. Fiscal year of seven, one, twenty-four, um, under the regular Plan A C. There's a nine point nine percent contribution by the employer. Under the A N, which is what you're currently under, is an eight point eight, so it's a one point two percent differential for the employee. Um, they are currently paying six point eight percent and it would be seven point five percent to move to the COLA-based. This gives folks a chance to have a COLA and then you will see the compounding factor of that for their future retirement opportunities. Uh, it keeps us in line with many of our surrounding communities. Um, our goal obviously is to retain our great employees and to attract uh great employees as well. And uh so I think that this aligns very nicely, um, the goal that we had was to implement this uh back in July, but. We've been negotiating, uh, negotiating, we've been in conversation with our legal counsel. And Maine Pers, just to make sure that we align this correctly, which brings us to uh you tonight with a. Start date of February first proposed, this is only going forward, there is no retroactivity to this whatsoever. So this is only going forward and we have the funding appropriated to be able to meet the town's requirements and. We obviously will expect the employees to meet theirs for their future retirement opportunities.
It's clearly stated that it going forward?
Yes, it's very clear, that's stated, in fact, the um resolution is in, I believe in your packet, but it is very clear going forward only. Uh, just like we had with the other unions for police and fire.
I move to adopt the resolution to change Maine Pers retirement plan for Public Works, General Government. And non-union employees from Plan A N to Plan A C. And as reflected in the respective employment contracts.
Second, all those in favor?
Behalf of all those folks, thank you.
Next, we have discussion and action to schedule a public hearing regarding the assurance of matching funds for Maine DOT applications to the US DOT FY twenty-five rebuilding. American infrastructure was sustained. American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Grant Program for the Route One Community Gateway Project.
So, you'll remember earlier in the summer, all the discussions over the past year and all the public input on the Route One. At that time, we called it a corridor study. We've adopted a much more fancy name, if you would, but the Route One Community Gateway Study and Implementation. And evolving from that has been, the Maine State DOT has been extremely committed and supportive under this RACE grant. And so, they, the maximum grant allowance is twenty-five million, and they are pursuing that vehemently. We are in conversation with one or multiple meetings weekly with Maine DOT. Their resolution, what we're asking you to support moving to a public hearing, would be Wells contributing four million dollars, the state four million. The twenty-five million comes from federal funding. So, we've talked about how our obligation would be ten percent. So, the state is pursuing an additional fifteen million dollar addition to that twenty-five million to equate to a forty million dollar project. And I think this will come in somewhere in that thirty-five to forty million dollar range. So, our max, we anticipate our maximum contribution would be four million dollars, the ten percent. As you might remember, when VHB was here previously, one of the discussions was to go back to the Transportation Center and look for ways that we can build pathways and/or sidewalks. They have done that research, and we'll have a meeting coming up soon with the college. But right now, the proposal is to rebuild or to build sidewalks from the Transportation Center all the way down the Route one oh-nine corridor, rebuilding what we have out here that are cobblestoned and maybe not in the best shape. Building sidewalks that take us down Chapel Road. Also, a walkway and/or pathway that would loop through the college area, understanding, of course, that we adopted a, basically a dormitory district, a college district. And so, future dormitories perhaps being built and maybe an athletic field in the future there. This would give walkways or pathways for students and others to be able to access Route One, and therefore maybe toward the beach as well. So, we're looking at it as a way that we can have our students, but maybe future workforce persons be able to get to the Route One and beach areas as well. So, a really, it's the big, well, as DOT described it, it is the largest grant that they have ever pursued, aside from their mega bridges. And they have invested an inordinate amount of interest and time into the Town of Wells. They see that as a really generational opportunity to help define our best opportunity to find a real downtown corridor. And that's their goal. Taking into account aesthetic lighting, like Scott brought up, and things that I think really could be a really defining feature for the town.
So, when we were talking about the Route one corridor, we were always thinking ten million, and now it's only four?
Four, four is the anticipated contribution of the town. Ten percent of that, what we think will be somewhere around forty million dollars. It's not small money, but in the scheme, it's, I personally think it's a pretty nice contribution.
I recall when we were talking about this, in the back of my mind, I was thinking it was gonna cost us ten.
Right.
Four is a lot less than ten.
It's a lot less than ten. So, that's, that's where we are kind of in a nutshell. The idea being, if you're willing to take this to public hearing for any additional input, and then we have to, as a community, I'd ask that you would empower me to write a letter to the Transportation Director in Washington promoting their support of this. DOT will be doing the same. The objective then would be to be able to reach out to our neighboring communities, perhaps the college, the chamber, other letters of support, supporting this initiative. A lot of moving parts to it, but it has gone extremely well thus far.
It's an amazing opportunity.
Yes. It is. It is.
This part, I like the question of these sidewalks out here.
Oh, I know. In the lights, you know? Well, and, and think about it, as we are envisioning Founder's Park and going right through there and improve, enhance sidewalks all the way through. It would be a real great opportunity.
Elementary school hall.
All right?
Mm-hmm.
I move to schedule a public hearing on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at six P.M., two oh eight Sanford Road in the Littlefield Meeting Room on the assurance of matching funds for Maine DOT application to the US DOT Fiscal Year twenty-five rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity RACE Grant Program for the Route One Community Gateway Project.
Second. All those in favor? Five, zero.
Thank you.
Now, this one, Mike, did you mention that you wanted to table it, or do you want to change it to schedule a workshop?
I think at this point, we would like to table it, and we will be scheduling a workshop for the twenty-first. And so, then we'll ask that we move the hearing, the public hearing, to the first meeting in February. And this is helping to align with staff availability and legal counsel availability.
So, we just need a tabling motion right now?
That's all, I think.
I move to table item number F tonight.
Second. Let her off, right?
Let me let her off, right?
All those in favor? Five, zero. All right, next, we have discussion and action to accept donations at the quest. We have a three hundred and ninety-five dollar and eighty cent contribution online. Cash donations received as of one three twenty-five for the We Are Wells Fund.
I move to accept the generous donations.
Second. All those in favor? Five, zero. Okay, we have a five hundred dollar anonymous donation to the Town of Wells for the Fuel Assistance Program Fund. We have a five hundred dollar donation, anonymous donation to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a five hundred dollar anonymous donation to the Town of Wells for the Founder's Park Community Center. We have a fourteen hundred dollar anonymous donation to the Town of Wells for Reeds Across America. We have a five hundred dollar donation from the Agunkwet Rotary Club to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a hundred dollar donation from the Well, from the Historical Society of Wells in Agunkwet to the Town of Wells for We Are Wells Fund. We have a one hundred dollar donation from William and Jane Thompson to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a two thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollar donation from the New England House and Peppers to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a two hundred and one dollar and fifty cent donation from Saroy's Breath Hour, pronounced C, no, C. Sir Chabre Hour, to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. I'm sorry if I butchered that. We have a one hundred dollar donation from Ron and Mary Jane Quake to the Wells Police Department. We have a one hundred dollar donation from Ron and Mary Jane Quake to the Wells Fire Department. We have a one thousand dollar donation from Susan Butler to the Town of Wells for Founder, for Founder's Park Community Center. We have a thousand dollar donation from Dennis and Melody Hardy to the Town of Wells for Founder's Park Community Center. We have a two hundred and fifty dollar donation from Peter Hill to the Town of Wells for Founder's Park Community Center. We have a two hundred and fifty dollar donation from Betsy Shelley to the Town of Wells for Founder's Park Community Center. We have a one hundred and twenty-five dollar donation from Kristen Ward to the Town of Wells for Founder's Park Community Center. And we have a one hundred and twenty-five dollar donation from Aaron Sterns to the Town of Wells for Founder's Park Community Center.
I move to accept the generous donations and write letters of thanks to the donors.
Second. All those in favor? Five, zero. Next, we have discussion and action to approve the minutes of December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four Selectman's Meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Meetings, yeah, meetings.
You went them separately, then we'll put them separately. I move for approval of the December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four Selectman's Special Meeting Minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Um, I'm not here.
You're right, yeah. Yeah, four, zero, one.
I move for approval of the December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four Selectman Meeting Minutes.
Second. All those in favor? Four, zero, one. Moving on, for the second time this evening, we have open to the public for ten minutes. Would anybody like to speak? Avery?
Thanks for the update about the, what are we calling it, the Gateway Project? It's great news, that's gonna be awesome. Did you get a sense when you talked to VHB about the new extension down to the train station? Is that stretch gonna be like the standard five-foot sidewalks, or will it be wider than that?
Yeah, right now, they're talking both either a multi-use path or sidewalk, depending upon the location. I don't think that's nailed down yet, but the multi-use path is certainly a consideration. I think one of the challenges would be going through the college area, making sure that we don't infringe upon future plans there, and then getting to the barefoot area. That is only, that is restricted to pedestrians only, so my sense is through there, that would be a sidewalk.
That makes sense, that makes sense. I personally prefer multi-use path for the, for the record.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Avery. Anybody else like to speak? Ain't none? Move on to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. I think we've heard the update from Jody, Mike York from the Harbor. You'll have three staff members attending the annual Harbor Master Training at Maine Maritime coming up in March. In Police Department, we have two conditional offers out for police officers. They're finishing up some of their required examinations. And assuming that all goes well there, we'll have two, what I think are gonna be very wonderful additions to our Police Department. That will leave us with one vacancy now. But compared to challenges many departments are experiencing in staffing, we feel very fortunate. In Public Works, interviews for the mechanic position, first round have taken place. And on tomorrow, I'll participate in the final interview for candidates, and hopefully we'll have a final person to advance for the mechanic position. Mary Beth in the Town Clerk's Office, dog licenses are a big thing right now, they're very active. They have over seven hundred licensed dogs now, and we hope to be able to license the other thirteen hundred sometime this month before the fine start in February. And the library director, library director interviews are being scheduled now. We had some really quality applicants. And so, we'll have a panel that will start with the first round of interviews shortly, and we hope that we'll be able to make a, an offer to someone sometime by the early part of February, perhaps. And I'd like to compliment Rebecca, anyone that saw the most recent Town News letters that goes out. Another really phenomenal job, and I, I don't wanna overstate that, but it's really great. And someone I know at Senator King's office, who used to work in the Kennybunk area, actually wrote, her name's Sarah Stanley, and she's liaison for Senator King. And she wrote, said basically, wow, because she received it. And so, I think you're attracting a lot of attention with the quality of that. And I think it was the Town Manager's portion that really brought her out. But really, really great work, and kudos to her staff for all the good work they're doing.
Thanks, man. Next, we have Select Board Comments, either Subcommittee Reports or individual Select Board Member Comments. Anybody have anything they'd like to share and contribute?
I got a couple, just everything, I usually give the school update. Went to sports, fall back, everything going on, there's a lot of good things going on at the schools and stuff. Wrestling has been in a lot of tournaments lately and stuff like that, so it's, it's been a good, so to speak, coming back from winter break kind of thing here. It's been a good time, playing tonight, as a matter of fact, I think basketball is tonight. Tomorrow, wrestling's at Noble, Winter Track, all that stuff is going on, so it's been good. Lastly, I normally complain about sitting at red lights all the time tonight. And I'll still complain about the nine B road bright, but today, when I got down to, it was actually a great sit at the red light at the construction site on Buffham Hill. Two eagles just flying around, fighting and doing stuff. Ball eagles just, I, I pulled out, I just said, you know, I said, I'm gonna sit here, I don't care if I'm late. I wasn't late to meeting, but. I'm gonna watch these eagles go out, because they were just going at it all with some something in that marsh. It was, it was such fun to watch these two ball eagles. So, I said, maybe there is a benefit to having a red light there once in a while. It is nice.
That's cool, that's great.
Area that you get to see those things, so it's pretty cool. That's it, thanks, John.
Yeah, good. Tim, anybody else have anything? All right, well, with that, we're gonna move on to an executive session to discuss the applicants to various boards and committees pursuant to one MRS four oh five six A. Do we have a motion?
I move to go into executive session to discuss the applicants to various boards and committees pursuant to one MRS subsection four oh five six A.
Second. All those in favor? Five, zero, great. All right, go ahead and fill that audio and video.